We'll call the regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for December fifth, two thousand seventeen, four thirty P M. The order. First item on the agenda is your consent agenda items, what if you wish this?
I'll move it.
Second.
We got a motion of second, any discussion on any? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries. Let me get here some special. Hmm.
I'm gonna carry.
Yeah. Item two B, conduct a public hearing to consider a resolution adopting special assessments for the two thousand sixteen seventeen weed snow.
Skipping on.
We, oop.
Oh, you, did you miss two A?
Did I, that's why I was having a problem here. There we go. Lakeside. Item two A, conduct a public hearing to consider a resolution approving the issue, reassessments of the two thousand five special assessments for four partials within Lakeside Village addition.
Mr. President, city council members, this is similar to items as lots have sold and forfeited areas in the past Dakota West. And I think there's been a couple others in Lakeside Village. It is a public hearing, so you can open up for a public hearing then.
Anybody here like to be heard on? Any of that? It's lot eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, block one. Seeing none?
Hearing none, I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing and approve the reassessment of the two thousand five special assessments.
Second.
We got a motion, a second off the resolution, waived reading, closing the public hearing. Any more discussion? Seeing none? Finance director, please call the roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item two B, conduct a public hearing to consider a resolution adopting the special assessments for the two thousand sixteen seventeen weed snow removal and water service line installation charges. Anybody have anything on that?
One comment I want to bring up, I dealt with this in the past. We cannot do it this year, the fee schedule has been adopted and whatnot. In the future, I'd like to look at some of our repeat offenders who we do three, four times every year, you can just plan on it. Is it possible, or maybe the city attorney, we have to ask, after you've offended the third time that year, can the fee go up for the service charge?
I think you can adjust the fees however you want to, as long as they're within reason. So if there are multiple situations, you can impose a fee that would be higher.
I would concur with counselor. I think that we see these same people year after year after year and, and very frustrating for city staff and, and and maybe that'll be enough for them to take care of their property, sell their property, do whatever, but just to let their property mow it only when the last possible second before the city rolls in, or just simply wait and this makes our city look bad and I, I think we can do a better job. So I would recommend city staff come back with a proposal for us sometime in the spring and, and before we have to worry about mowing or come up with some recommendations in these categories and a tier level, maybe three levels or something.
I would agree also, I mean, I was, after reviewing it this weekend, I was looking at it and just kind of thinking, maybe we're too, too cheap. That's why they don't mow the lawn or do this.
Or don't get the neighbor to take care of it, or something, you know.
Correct, you know, it's just. Cause it takes a lot of time.
City council members, I think one of the issues that I think Mr. Hipper alluded to was the fact that if you, if it takes you a half an hour of time and, and a quarter gallon of gas to mow that grass, the, the, the fee has to, to some extent reasonably equate to that. You know, we can't charge five hundred dollars for a fifty dollar mowing event, cause that, just in the past, you know, and talking to the city attorney's office, that was, that was not reasonable. So.
But let's talk about some of the.
Time you spend on that and what your expenses are, have to correlate sort of to what the fee is unless, then you're just fining people.
I would agree with the city manager on that. I think there has to be a relationship between the amount of services and the costs of any materials being provided that we cannot do a end around fine. If you want to get into that question, that would be another matter. But when we're talking about just the fee for the services being provided to the property owner, there has to be a relationship to the actual work provided.
But if it continues thing like Dave said, could you have a penalty in it? Would that be a fine or something, because otherwise we could be mowing everybody's lawn in town.
I think we could possibly address that through part of the nuisance provisions of the code or something like that. There may be some other ways to deal with that for repeat offenders that wouldn't necessarily be in the fee schedule, but would accomplish the same goal of deterring people not taking care of their property.
My memory.
Well, I just reminded, there's a one-time two hundred and eighty-five dollar administrative fee. I don't know if that would be an option that.
By statute or by?
Is that in the amount now, or?
We, we try to estimate the admin costs that go into it as well as part of that.
So that's built into the fee schedule now.
Right.
But that's set up once you have the property owner identified, if you have to go back, you've already got the account set up.
That is correct, it's just a one-time.
Right, okay.
And are a lot of these just abandoned lots?
Oh, no.
A lot of our homes?
Yes.
But I know if my memory is right, it's, the lawn has to be eight inches high before the complaint rolls in. Then the letter goes out, then they got a week to take care of it, so then the grass is still growing. And then you gotta get somebody to get out there and get the mower and it's up a little bit higher, so it's probably not a half an hour mow. It's, and then who knows what's in that property with junk and metal and some people's equipment that's gotta go in and can be pretty dangerous, right? That'd be a pretty fair statement. So it, you know, there is some work to this, so. I think we, you know, again, as we always said, we can take a look at what others, some other cities are doing and see if there's any, we can gain any insight from our recommendations from them. And if there's not, if this is the best way to do it, then we leave it, but if there are some options, I think we, I hear it's wanting to at least take a look at that.
It might be that the, that the fee stays the way it is, but as the city attorney points out, in a nuisance, if you have three or more of these events, then that becomes a fining event as compared to a reimbursable event.
I'm okay with that.
I'm all right with that.
I'm okay.
Okay.
With that being said, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, adopting a special assessments for two thousand sixteen seventeen weed snow removal and water service line installation charges.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second off the resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? Seeing none, finance director, please call the roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item three A, number one, consider an application for Stefan Finley on behalf of M C P Foods Incorporated and Furmanage Inc. Incorporated requesting front yard setback and parking requirements variance for the property legally described as block one north of Center Street, which would be one hundred North Valley Street.
I'd like to add the planning and zoning adjustment recommended approval at the November thirtieth, two thousand seventeen meeting. We did discuss the parking situation because the recommended would be two hundred and one vehicles. The applicant is requesting the variance to allow to ninety-three vehicles. And they are stating that they have eighty-one people on a shift. It is a special circumstance. It was granted previously for this building, but they do have parking across the street. They've got an agreement in place with the co-op where the mill is currently on Front Street, so they have overflow parking. But that was a concern of ours and another concern was whether at shift change, they say that all their employees do not shift change at the same time, so they don't need, you know, hundred and sixty vehicles at the same time, you know. So those are some of the comments. We had no written or oral comments on it reported. So that's just my feedback. I do believe we have a couple of representatives here if they wish to speak on behalf.
Anybody else have anymore?
I mean, I've been through these before with Furmanage, a great plant for New Ulm. This should be the last one. I think we're out of the zero, zero, zero around the block, so.
Always should be, huh?
I'm gonna offer the motion to approve the, the variance.
Second. We got a motion, a second approved variance, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries. Item three A, number two, consider an application from Al Taylor on behalf of S and P Development LLC requesting a yard, rear yard setback variance for the property legally described as lot four, block three, Milford Heights, second addition, which is six forty-two.
Haberly.
Haberly Avenue.
Again, the board of zoning recommended approval at the November thirtieth, two thousand seventeen meeting. If you look at your packet and you look at the building there that they're gonna be putting up, it's gonna be shorter in the rear and the alley way, so it's not in a major front way. In this way, they don't have to shorten up their building and they can keep all the units the same uniformity. That was, uh, because of this minimal, you know, traffic gonna be on an alley there is what we were looking at. So we were recommending approval.
I'll offer motion to approve the application, second.
We got a motion, a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries. Item three B, number one, consider a resolution approving with conditions the request from Eric Bodie on behalf of Roseanne Doomer for the simple lot division of the property located at twenty-three and twenty-seven South Minnesota Street.
And the planning commission unanimously recommended approval with conditions at the November thirtieth, two thousand seventeen meeting. There's, some of the conditions are for the firewall between the two buildings. And then there was an agreement drawn up in regards to the water and the sewer services. I'm assuming Roger has had a chance to take a look at that agreement.
I think, yeah, I have, I believe Tom Borgan did as well. In looking at it, I think it would adequately address the things that need to be taken care of. They have to format it a little differently to get it recorded, but that's part of the requirements also that it would be recorded, so.
I had a question on the, on this particular property, and I don't know if it came up in discussion, but it shares the exact same frontage all the way across both buildings. Was there discussion about what happens when one owner wants to do something different, or?
There was no discussion as far as the facade.
I mean, it's a, it's a very nice, you know, front entrance, but it covers both buildings and it's not, obviously if it didn't come up, I guess it's not a, I know I remember looking at going, would have one, one object, they really couldn't object once we split it.
It's a unique situation. The property's been for sale for, for some time, you know, and the owner would like to sell it and this gives an avenue to
Right.
Sell it and to two different parties to accommodate it, but there's, like I say, conditions with the water and the sewer and the firewall, because they share a common wall.
But we don't have shared utilities in there.
There's shared utilities, that's where there's an agreement in place that Roger and Tom worked on. That's what we were told at our meeting. We don't want to have another situation like the other two previous ones that happened within the community. So.
Thank you, any more discussion?
I will.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, approving the with conditions, the request.
Second.
We got a motion, a second off the resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? Seeing none, finance director, please call the roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item four A, consider a motion approving the issuance of an annual Sunday liquor license for B F D Incorporated, also known as the Ritz two twenty-seven.
I'll move it.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, any discussion?
Mr. President, a couple of matters. When I was reviewing this on the agenda, I spoke with staff at city hall and my understanding is that one of the documents provided indicated that with respect to their sales, they were licensed through, I believe, the end of December. And without having the appropriate license, they couldn't be open, cause they wouldn't be selling food. I have no idea what the plan is as far as the food sales are concerned, or how much, a question you might have about that. The state law requires that there, it be sold in conjunction with the sale of food. It also requires seating capacity for at least thirty people. I have no idea what the seating capacity is.
I know we beat that, but food, maybe we have to ask Mr. Bodie to step up?
State your name and address for the record, please.
Aaron Bodie, eleven twenty-six L State Street. So we have a limited food license through the state, which ends on the thirty-first and then the twenty-eighteen starts back up on the first of January, which should allow us to serve food and then have the Sunday liquor license.
If you, if you have a license, the, what we've been provided with just as it expires?
Oh, no, I provided them with the license. Jenny over at City Finance has it now.
Okay, I didn't, she didn't forward that to me.
Oh, okay, yep.
Limited food, what are you talking?
Uh, limited food, we just have frozen pizzas, yep.
Good enough.
Okay, thank you. Any other concerns, questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries. Item five A, oral presentation conducted by Laura Alvinbach. I know I goofed it up, you can pronounce it right, program director for the Minnesota Valley Council of Governments regarding the Minnesota Valley Council of Governments' operation and membership benefits.
Yes, thank you, and you did a very, a very good job. It's Laura Alvinbach and I am with the Minnesota Valley Council of Governments. For those of you who may not know me, I was with the Council of Governments for about ten years, up until about six years ago. I took a hiatus and went off into county management for a couple of years and am now back working with the Council of Governments and glad to be back. So Brian asked me to come and to speak on the Council of Governments. For those of you that are not familiar with who we are, and for those of you who are, this will be a nice reminder and feel free to ask any questions. So as far as the Council of Governments, who we are, is we are a voluntary organization that's comprised of, at this time, eleven cities and two counties, kind of in the south central region of the state. We work with those cities and counties in a variety of capacities. Some of the jurisdictions may use us to augment staff if they're a very small community, they may not have those staff members. And so they're gonna look for somebody who's gonna provide H R services, land use, planning services, any of those types of things that it just is not cost effective for them to have staff on site, but yet they still have those needs. For some of our larger communities, we may be there to help support those technical experts that you have on staff. So it may be providing services in addition to staff or providing some of that background information that they may need to help them be successful at their functions. So for example, in New Ulm, in, over the past year and a half, we've done a variety of salary studies and surveys. Now certainly you've got staff that can do that, those activities, but that may be a, a way for us to help provide some of the resources so that they're able to do some of that day-to-day work or policy creation work while having that information. Another, one of the things that we do is we do provide an opportunity for cities, counties, elected and appointed staff in the region to come together and to discuss those areas of common interest and or find ways that there may be better, more efficient ways of doing business. As we all know, we're continually being pressured to do more, do, provide more services, more efficient services, quicker services, and yet funding tends to be limited and or reduced, being reduced. So this is a way that we can bring some of those communities and jurisdictions together to look at, what services are you providing? Is there a way that we can, you know, work together? Are there common needs that all of us need training, for example? There's always seems to be training needs, but we don't always want our staff to have to go to the training. And so we can bring some of that either to the jurisdiction itself, like we've done here on multiple occasions, or maybe bringing it to a more regional location. And so it might be the cog would hold a, a regional training right here in New Ulm or in Mankato or one of our other jurisdictions to help minimize that time that staff is away, as well as some of those travel costs. And again, you know, you end up with some communication and collaboration that benefits the entire region versus all these different jurisdictions, kind of attempting to work at things on their own. One of the things that the cog is most proud of is the ability to be very flexible and adaptable to the needs. So I can't come here and say, this is what we do. I can say generally, this is what we do, but what we really pride ourselves is on the ability to have Brian give us a call and say, you know, this is what we're looking at here in the city of New Ulm. Is this something that the cog can do? If we've got the resources or we know who to contact or what we need to get started doing it, we can do that. And we do that for all of our jurisdictions. So really, we're able to personalize that service for whatever the members may need. Then we can identify also other trends. So, you know, Brian may call and say, yeah, this is an issue that we're dealing with. We're really dealing with, you know, those nuisance properties where the grass is getting way too long and how do we respond to that? We can help, maybe it's pulling together some of those nuisance ordinances from other jurisdictions or looking at what others have in place, doing those fee schedule surveys to see how those, where that nexus is. But if all of a sudden, New Ulm's contacting us and then Cortland's contacting us and now, you know, Wasika County is letting us, you know, all of a sudden we're starting to see trends and so maybe it's putting together some type of sample nuisance ordinance along those lines. So we really do, that's one of the things that we, we can, because we're right there in the trenches with a lot of these jurisdictions, we know right away, we can start to see some of these trends and get on top of those. Our organization chart is very small, we're a very small organization, so we are governed by a general assembly which is comprised of two members from each of our jurisdictions. So we have typically, you have an elected official, so the mayor is on our, our general assembly, as well as we'll typically have the top appointed official, so Brian gets to join us in that role. We have an operations committee that provides guidance and advi, and is advisory to our general assembly and that's typically made up of the chief appointed official from each of our jurisdictions. We have an executive director in place who dedicates a portion of, of a full-time position to the, to the role. Then you have myself as the program director, and so I'm essentially the only full-time staff with the organization. We also have some administrative services and then we have a senior advisor, a retired city administrator who provides a lot of senior assistance to jurisdictions, spends an awful lot of time doing some interim work for area cities and that type of stuff, which may be in transition between administrators. Again, we have our own governing bodies, so we have officers. Our chair is the city administrator from Janesville, our vice chair is the county commissioner from Wasika County. And we also, because we predate the regional development commissions and those regional development commissions are based off of the structure that the Council of Governments had back in the seventies. We also have a statute-appointed position on region nine, and so therefore we have a representative from the Council of Government, once again, well represented by the city of New Ulm, who represents the Council of Governments. The areas that we tend to work most often in is human resources, land use planning, general administration. And then as I indicated, we do provide an awful lot of training, again, at that regional level. But I think where, what we're most known for is that personal, private, or that, you know, jurisdictional training where we bring our show on the road. So if we're doing planning commissioner training, it's not necessarily that all of your planning commissioners have to go to a site. I'll come out here and I'll sit, you know, wherever, wherever in New Ulm you guys want me and I will train the planning commissioners. So we also do some other training, which I'll go into, some of our specific training, just so you can see kind of the variety that we do. In human resources, you know, a lot of it is dealing with, you know, staff relations. So it might be that creating job descriptions, doing those job postings, a lot of interview question creation. We sit on a lot of interview panels and then we do some workplace reviews and investigations. Lot of surveys, like I talked about, a lot of labor relations consultations, for those that are union environments. We might be doing surveys on, you know, what are other contracts for this group? What do they have in, in place? What does that language look like? How, you know, trying to be consistent. And then pay equity reporting. I also do a lot of policy, personnel policy creation. We assist with discipline and termination, so we can help write those letters or do some coaching with the department heads and supervisors. Any, you know, pay scale creation and implementation, performance evaluation assistance. In the land use planning area, we work on zoning ordinances, comprehensive plan creations or revisions. Lot of, again, land use and surveys, mapping and, you know, any of those specific things that you may, processes that you have to go through, such as street or alley vacates, that type of stuff we assist with. Administration, you know, we might work on budget preparation if it's gathering background information, capital improvement plan creation, open meeting law consultation. Again, policy and procedure development, it might be doing a complete re, overhaul on a policy or maybe there's just one specific one that you guys would want us to look at. Some administrative support, you know, we'll, you have, your minute taker isn't able to attend a meeting? Come out and take minutes if necessary. Some research and again, a lot of surveys. We also track local government legislation, so try in recognizing how that impacts cities and counties. And then, you know, also specific to cities a lot with fire departments, relief associations, that type of stuff. The training areas that we have, again, we have kind of our core set of training, but we're always working with our operations committee to identify areas that may need training. So some of our training includes, you know, customer service, the planning commissioner, like I mentioned, supervision in public sector, we're looking at some cybersecurity, some issues, you know, overcoming language and cultural barriers in service delivery. And then we also, again, a lot of them might come out of specific jurisdiction requests. So we're looking at some law enforcement training that we'll be holding in the next couple of weeks. Some of the benefits that I, I would expect, if you ask, you know, how does New Ulm benefit from this? Again, we're, you know, we're kind of that clearinghouse for communications, so we can help those relationships and, you know, have a pathway for those elected, appointed, you know. It's not very often that you might have a small city mayor who's able to work with a county administrator. We can provide that opportunity because often the challenges are the, very similar or the same. And so providing that, again, it helps to provide an effective and efficient delivery of services. There may be one-time projects that are necessary for the city of New Ulm. It's not, it's just not cost effective to bring on a staff member to do that. Send it on over to the cog and we can do those types of things. And again, that flexibility, I can't stress that enough. I never know what my day is gonna be like, just when I think I'm gonna be spending it on human resources all day, I end up. Just when I think I'm going to be spending it on human resources all day, I end up spending it talking budgets or whatever. We do have a, there is a membership assessment that is determined by our general assembly to help cover our costs. So if you look at all, if you look at all the services that we provide and look at the fact that we're running at, you know, an eighty, ninety thousand dollar a year budget, I think it's a pretty effective use of tax dollars. And so the fee currently is, is forty-five hundred is our base fee and then thirty-six cents per capita. So for example, New Ulm, the proposed in two thousand eighteen is approximately nine thousand dollars. So that was a very quick overview. I don't know, Brian, if there's anything else you'd like me to touch on while I'm here, if there's any questions from the council?
I guess I'd be open to any questions the council may have of the organization, but I think generally speaking, the, the city uses the Minnesota Valley Council of Government as a pressure relief valve when we are so busy doing other things and something pops up on the screen. We call the COG and say, can you do this survey? Can you gather this information? And it's like having an additional staff person on call, so we don't have to have somebody here twelve months a year. Other cities may utilize the COG much more than we do, because they may be smaller and they don't have the depth of personnel that we have. And we've got an engineering department. Some things that the COG might help is the, you know, working with a project that requires some coordination with engineering. We have that on staff, we don't really need to go outside to get that. So we do use it, I think we, we get our, our money back out of it. Some years may be pretty light, in other years, it's really heavy. But one of the things that I think is interesting is through the years, since the, since the early seventies, when the COG was initially conceptualized and created, was that it has remained a flexible entity. Those around in government in the seventies knew that the federal government was really into planning. Comprehensive plans were a big thing. Everybody had to do a comprehensive plan in a very short order of time. And that was part of the COG's, you know, workload. Then ten years later, it becomes, everybody needs a personnel policy manual in order to keep, you know, ahead of the law. And everybody's got to do this. And then pretty soon, you know, they're providing that service. So it's flexible, we use it, I do appreciate it, and it's something that we don't have to have somebody, you know, looking for work when they're not busy here at the city. They're working on other things for other cities and, and they've been very receptive and responsive to getting information back to us in relatively fast manner. Many people, you know, maybe on the city council wasn't even aware that we were a member of, of the COG. Cogs are pretty rare, to be quite honest, but they preceded the regional development corporations. And the regional development corporation came out of the federal government saying, everybody should have comprehensive plans and everybody should have all these other things, as well as programs like Meal on Wheels and stuff like that, that, uh, senior programming. Well, that changed, you know, that put a new player in, in the, in the arena and then that required the COG to make some adjustments on what it provided. And so then they reorganized and said, well, this isn't being covered and everybody needs help here. So they're continually in a reorganization mode, whatever we need, they're willing to help out. If you see the, the monthly or quarterly report from all the cities and the counties that they work for, it's a very large assortment of different duties, from the mundane to the, to the high tech. So I think I appreciate them probably more now than, than sixteen years ago. Even though I knew who they were, I really didn't know how we could use them as much as we, we do. So, but I think for my purposes, the reason I, I asked Laura to, to be here was just to, you know, we're doing budget. This is one of those budget items, definitely it's not hidden, but it's a membership, part of that line item of services that we, we pay to have them provide services throughout the year for us. And Mayor Boyzman and I have been attending the meetings and sometimes they're close, sometimes they're not so close, but we do get there and represent the city. So if any, have any questions, more particular, I'm sure Laura would be able to.
So, sir chair, we pay a forty, we pay a fee to be a member of this. And then if we request work, is that an additional hourly fee or?
That is not, it's all included as part of. There are certain projects, such as like, you know, those very large ones, like a comprehensive plan. Or if we're actually, you know, there have been a couple of times where we've actually done staffing for the jurisdiction, whether it's an interim or, you know, something like that. That's an additional fee, but that's very, very rare. I think probably in my, you know, ten years of experience with the COG, it's probably less than five times I've charged a jurisdiction something above and beyond or, you know, copy fees. Copies will just pass along, but otherwise, it's a pretty all-inclusive.
So for example, we've had some discussion here in the past about a blight ordinance of some sort. We haven't really narrowed that down to what we really want, but that's something you could help us with once we figured out what we were looking for.
Yeah, or even if you're in the process of what are other jurisdictions doing? You know, whether it be, what are similarly sized or what are, you know, this area or something like that.
Or concentration more on buildings versus property or something?
Yeah, yeah.
We don't know where we're going with that.
Right, yeah, or if there, yeah, if there is like a focus area that, you know, we'd, we'd like to, to see a little bit more of this or, you know, what's typically included, so we can look and decide what we even want to focus on.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Anybody else have any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just as a note, we probably would have used the COG to, to find out information on like golf carts and riding around town, but we received so much information from the public and that we didn't need to, need to go to the COG. But that would be one of those topics that if we didn't know anything about, we would just say, find out, give us some information.
Okay, we'll go on to item number six A, one and two. Consider an ordinance amending section nine point oh four of the city code, of the city of New Ulm relative to zoning of said city. Second reading of ordinance number seventeen dash zero two one, fifth series, and a motion to adopt ordinance number seventeen dash zero two one, fifth series.
I'll offer a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance seventeen dash zero two one and secondary motion to adopt the ordinance.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? See a nun? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pools, nope, motion carries. Item six B, number one and two. Consider an ordinance amending section, amending the city code of the city of New Ulm to combine the board of zoning adjustment with the planning commission in said city. Second reading of ordinance number seventeen dash zero two two, fifth series, and a motion to adopt ordinance number seventeen dash zero two two, fifth series.
I'll offer a motion to waive the second reading and then adopt the ordinance of seventeen dash zero two two, fifth series.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pools, nope, motion carries. Item six C, receive a status report on the removal of the contaminated soils from the city center apartment site and order it filed. Brian, you got something else?
Mr. President, city council members, as you can see from the grant budget summary, we exceeded the budget for the soil remediation project at the city center apartments by roughly a hundred thousand dollars. And in order to mitigate that cost overrun, we had a list of revenue sources, whether it be grants, state reimbursement, the purchase price of the land, the administrative portion of any TIF funds, funds from a TIF hazard or substance district or TIF revenues generated by the project. Those were our options that we had listed in the development agreement as sources of money to pay for any overruns should they occur. As you note, there is an overrun. First step we're going to do is the city's going to be applying for additional funding through the contamination cleanup grant program. Although it is a competitive process, we will be heading in that direction. And partly, the overrun has to do with larger quantities and three years, you know, earlier, the estimates of what it would cost and then three years later. And you combine those two, you'll see there's been a reduction in a couple of areas and then an overage in, in other areas. So in the end, it, it's a, it's a big number, but I think if we go through the process, we'll be able to, you know, at least hopefully obtain funding from other sources to reduce that down to a much smaller number. Conversely, you look at, you know, the value of the project in the downtown area, the, you know, so many housing units. If we can, you know, reduce the overage by half, fifty thousand dollars, it's probably still in our best interest to continue on with the project, given the benefits that it provides the community. Well, and we are going to continue on with the project. It's just how are we going to deal with the cost overrun is all the question is, so. So staff will be working on that, so this is just for information at this point.
Anybody have any questions?
Motion to receive the status report and order it filed.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? See a nun? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pools, nope, motion carries. Item seven A, consider approving the general wage adjustment for the non-unionized full-time and part-time city employees effective January first, two thousand eighteen.
Mr. President, city council members, the CPI for this last year is one point five percent. We have two other contracts that are tied to the CPI. And historically, as, as long as we've been, or I've been here, the, the general wage adjustment for full-time city employees that were non-unionized basically reflected somewhere in the vicinity of, of the next contract year. Since those are tied to the CPI of one point five percent, that is what's being recommended. The non-unionized part-time employees increase of one point six three percent is slightly different. Other than the fact that it also is, you know, kind of tied to the CPI, it also is responding to the requirement that the minimum wage go up on January first. So when you add the increase in minimum wage and the CPI, you end up with a little bit higher number. That we, you know, it probably could be slightly, you know, a few pennies less than that if we didn't do the, the CPI, but the fact remains that we have to increase that anyway. Normally, we would do that in March, but because this law goes in effect, you know, on January first, the new increase goes into effect, we are forced into doing it on January first. Otherwise, that would be done at a later date. So that's, that's the rationale behind the proposed action. There are no other adjustments made to the compensation or benefit package. So it's very simple, it's just two items at this time and they both deal with the CPI.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns?
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? See a nun? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pools, nope, motion carries. Item seven B, consider motion approving the city of New Ulm emergency operation plan, which provides a framework for the city personnel to manage emergency events to ensure that the protection of the public from the effects of potential hazards. Dave, you have something on that you want to discuss?
Mr. Council President, members of the council, I'm Dave Borckert. I'm a commander with the New Ulm Police Department and I'm the Emergency Management Director for the city of New Ulm. I'm here to answer any questions that you potentially would have. Just to kind of give a little bit of a background, we meet every month, we meet the third Thursday of the month at eight thirty. And we have several individuals that, that meet, that are part of that committee. We've, actually, we've, we've been increasing the number of private partners, which is, you know, really an advantage. And we also have a fire chief, at least generally, the fire chief is there. We have individuals from engineering, Red Cross, a lot of times Salvation Army. And then just, you know, key, key players, because, you know, we always talk about, if we're in an emergency, we don't want to be exchanging business cards right, right at the event. We want to know everybody beforehand and, and plan. The emergency operation plan, after each, after most of our meetings, we generally go chapter by chapter. Well, like, we'll, we'll pick out a chapter and we'll work on it, just with everybody. We try to, if there's certain subject matter experts that we feel maybe could add to it, we, we invite them prior to and then, you know, try to get their input, share the, the chapter with them and then get the feedback and, and discuss it at that particular meeting. And we, we do that throughout the year. So we're at the plan now, or we're at the, the point now where we'd like to, we feel that we have all the amendments and all the, the changes and we'd like to get approval from the council.
Mr. President, city council members, the city attorney, Hipper, and I have had a discussion earlier this week and, and there were a couple of issues that, that the city attorney would like to maybe discuss with Commander Borckert. And at this time, I guess I would recommend, given the fact that that conversation, you know, is coming up probably later this week, that maybe just table this until the next city council meeting, until we've had an opportunity to talk about a couple of the items that the city attorney has, has a question on. And kind of, you know, feel bad that we're kind of coming here at the, at the very end and saying, oh, wait, wait, hold the horses. We gotta, you know, we want to talk about a couple of things, but make sure it's all done right. I think we need to probably address and, and have a discussion of a couple of those items that, that the city attorney has and then we'll bring it back in two weeks, if that works okay with the city council.
Would I have a couple of questions, just maybe our comments that I might as well bring up at this point, I would guess. Just, first of all, thank you for, to you and your team, this is a lot of work. And if something really goes bad in our city, this is what we're all going to look to. And, and we may never have to look at it, but hopefully we never do. But if something really does go bad in our community, a tornado, that would take out half our town. This is the, the sheets we're going to go to to figure out how do we move forward. And so I want to thank you and your group for your time and, on this. And I have asked Commander Borckert a few questions previously. I did have a question when I was reading through this, and this is like a fifty-page document. There's a Red Cross shelter list, which kind of lists areas all over the community that the schools, that would be, if something went bad, here's where everybody would go. But I kind of noticed there was really nothing in the center of town when I looked at it. Maybe I'm missing something, but, so I was, I, I wrote a note when I read this over, why not Turner Hall? But I, I, it was like, there was nothing for the dead center of town, then unless I'm missing something. And we have the Catholic school on one end and senior high in St. Paul's. But did that ever come up at all, was it ever talked about, is anything like dead center of town?
Mr. Council President, Councilor Schultz, the actual list, the shelters, that's actually comprised by the Red Cross. We, we have it in our EOP, our Emergency Operation Plan, because we want it, you know, that's, that's our framework. We want it as a, a matter of reference, but Red Cross actually takes care of, of the sheltering.
And Turner Hall, if they're watching, they're probably going, what?
But, but we could certainly.
They're big, they're big, that's what I was.
We could certainly recommend that to them, and if there's other locations, I, I think they're always, you know, open to those suggestions. But that, that responsibility actually rests with, with the Red Cross.
Otherwise, again, it's really good work, it's detailed, it's phone numbers, it's email addresses, it's how to get ahold of who and, and when and for what. So thank you again for your work on this.
You're welcome.
With that, I'll maybe offer a motion to table it till next, next meeting. Is that when you want to, is it a quick question or a detailed questions?
We're planning to meet this Friday morning at eight thirty. And I don't, I've got some details, some small questions, some larger ones that I wanted to run by Dave and Brian. I'm certainly hoping, I don't think there's going to be anything of real consequence, but just, I don't know. Procedurally, Commander, if there would be something you'd consider major, if you'd want to take it back to the group before you'd want the council to consider it, if you've got the authority to, to make any amendments, if you would agree that they'd be appropriate, would it be ready by the next meeting?
Yes, it would be.
Okay. Tableting it till the next meeting, that should be fine.
Or whenever, I'll just say, or whenever appropriate. That way you can, if it's not ready, you can.
Got a little bear.
You need a little more time, that's fine too. All right. So that'll be my motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to table it. Any more discussion? See a none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Calls no. Motion carries. Item seven C, consider resolution accepting a U.S. Department of Justice body warrant, warrant camera, warrant camera, I should say, grant, project number is two seventeen B C B X zero zero one five in amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, this is a matching grant. The city will be paying fifty percent of the cost. The grant is fifty percent at thirty thousand dollars. If you want, if you want body worn cameras and want fifty percent grant, you, you move to approve. If you want to pay for it yourself, one hundred percent, I would decline it.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, accept the U.S. Department of Justice Body Worn Camera Grant, project number two zero one seven B C B X zero zero one five in the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I guess, is this our first camera then, for the city?
Well, no, because we've had automobile position cameras for a long time. This is just the, the body worn cameras. And there's a process, it's a rather lengthy process. There's a state statute that tells you, or federal, maybe. It tells you, you can't start the buying process until you have the, the policies in place. I mean, this is a pretty strict process. And we're just, I think, we've been talking about this for probably twelve to eighteen months. And I know this isn't something that just happens overnight. But we're to the point now where we can, you know, accept the grant and then move forward on it.
And keep in mind, it's not so much just getting the cameras, the policies, then now that you have cameras and now that you're taping, somebody's got to look at them. And now you have a new cost of storage, and these create a huge amounts of storage issues. How long do you keep that, those tapes around? So it creates a whole new world that a lot of people, it's just not just a camera you plug on your thing. And I know now the future, they're talking about gun cameras, that they're probably better than even body cameras. But that's the new thing coming in the next five years. So, yeah. You create one issue, but then it adds in and multiplies to other issues. So.
Roger.
I think Counselor Schultz has pointed out some very important points. And as Brian mentioned, we absolutely are going to need to move forward with the policy part of this. And I think this is still an area where communities, law enforcement agencies are still developing what's going to work and what doesn't. I think some of the biggest areas, aside from just the storage, you've got the question of privacy, you've got the question of the cost of redacting this. If law enforcement gets called to a scene with public or private, if there's juveniles present, you know, if they're dealing with a very traumatic situation, how much of this, you know, may have to be redacted? Who's going to do the redacting? Who's going to pay for it? It's not just as simple as buying the cameras and turning them on and letting the police do their work. So we've got a lot of things to go through, but this would be a step towards at least acquiring them.
Mr. Council President, members of the council, Commander Dave Borckert. One, regarding the, the grant, this is the next logical step. We would, we would need to, to have this passed before we obviously move on. We've also, we, as far as policy development, one requirement with the Department of Justice grant is that we get community feedback. And we're doing that through the, you know, one means would be through the Human Rights Commission. And then we're going to be inviting, you know, we, we realistically want some, some good discussion, some, some good input. And we're going to be inviting the community to that, to that public meeting. And then generate, you know, hopefully some input, some concerns. Maybe we can discuss those, those type of things as far as policy development. Ultimately, it goes through the same process as far as, you know, forwarding to City Attorney and then ultimately having the City Council approve that. But there's going to be, there's going to be a few more steps involved with it. But again, the, the approval of the grant is the, is the first step that we would need to proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Any more? Nobody? Okay. So we do have a motion? Okay.
Yes.
We have a motion, offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See a none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Schultz?
Yes.
Counsel Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item seven D, consider resolution designated the two thousand thirteen, two thousand eighteen election poll places within the City of New Ulm presenting to Minnesota Statute two oh four B, or point sixteen subdivision one. Nicole?
Counsel, this was, I believe, new in the statute this year, that we'll have to every year before the, before a general election or before an election designate the polling places. So that's what we're doing here. It is reducing the number of polling places from eight to four as requested by the county. I know they were approved, I believe, for the funds to purchase new equipment. And this will help them to cover more of their polling places across the county if, if we need half as much equipment here as we normally would. The theory being that the technology behind the new equipment will help move those lines through as more voters show up at each polling place. We've talked to some of our election judges, and they don't have too many concerns about the increased number of voters at each place. And we've gone through and we've worked with, well, actually, three of the locations are city buildings. And we've worked with, with the city staff as far as scheduling those and making sure we have a big enough space to accommodate the, the voting process and the setup and, and teardown process as we go through the next election. So.
So prior to the next election, we'll be notifying the public of the changes of the voting places and stuff.
I believe the county will take care of those notifications.
County does? Okay.
Yeah, I think she mentioned that last time when she was here. So.
Okay.
Everybody would be notified of their polling place. So.
And it'll be a good year. It's not a presidential year. It'll be a good year to give it a try and see where the hiccups are and how it goes before the next presidential election, in which we'll have two primaries and a general election. So.
Okay.
We'll see how it goes.
It's be a little different, my understanding, as you walk in and you'll be able to type in your name and it gives you the information, yes, you're, you're in the right spot, or no, you're not, or yes, go ahead and vote. We'll see.
Good. All right. Any more discussion? See a none? Can I entertain a motion?
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, combining and designating the twenty eighteen election polling places to Redeemer Lutheran Church for Ward one, New Ulm Community Center for Ward two, New Ulm Civic Center for Ward three, and Harmon Park Shelter for Ward four.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second, offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See a none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Schultz?
Yes.
Counsel Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item seven E, consider resolution authorize in the name of the New Ulm to hang colorful stripes of decorative clothing on a Minnesota street in observance of the season of foshing.
I'll offer the resolution to hang the rags. I mean, the colorful strips of decorative cloth.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I think I say that every year.
I know you do. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Schultz?
Yes.
Counsel Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item seven F, consider authorizing construction projects in Civic Center as requested by the New Ulm Steel. Brian?
Well, Mr. Schmitz is here representing the New Ulm Park and Rec. And he will walk you through the options we have.
Tom Schmitz, Park and Recreation Department, President Schmitz, City Councilors, you have before you a variety of information and a few options for potential changes at the Civic Center. As you know, that the building was created with eight team rooms. And we have recently gone into a lease agreement with a junior hockey franchise who completed their inaugural season last winter. Now they're into their second season. And they have non-exclusive rights to two of those team rooms as per lease. And so last winter, the inaugural season, the Park and Recreation Department allowed some of the other users to use a storage room in the building so that we don't displace the Steel hockey team. Junior hockey franchises traditionally have exclusive rights to team rooms. So the players don't have to bring their equipment home, and they don't have to secure personal items in the team rooms throughout the various junior hockey leagues in, in North America. But the department chose to create some temporary team rooms in a storage room so that we still had basically eight team rooms for users of the youth association and the figure skating programs. And so we did not displace the Steel significantly last season. But now we have become aware that due to the lack of heating ventilation in that storage room, the building official has stated that we cannot use it for human occupancy. And so one of the options on your action form is to allow the installation of heating and ventilation in that storage room to create kind of a dual-purpose space that can be used for storage still. This is in the north arena underneath the north bleachers. And it's where we store the south arena boards and glass, you know, at the, like, end of the hockey season to prepare the south arena for the dry floor shows. And that room is relatively not used for storage significantly during the winter hockey season. So that's kind of part one, is to talk about what options may exist in that storage room to reestablish or establish, you know, human occupancy in a storage room or create a multipurpose space. And then there are a, a couple of other projects that have been discussed over the past few months with the franchise, including expanded office space up in the concourse. And then a slight modification to a part of the top row of seating in the south arena, including a kind of a lean rail that you see at many arenas around North America. So I'm very happy to try and answer any questions you may have. We got various cost numbers associated with some of these projects. You know, we also have some larger concepts that we've had conversations with the franchise about renovating or expanding or modifying their team room, relocating it. And you see that as the potential. Well, the, the HVAC in the storage room is in the twenty-five thousand dollar range, is our preliminary estimate. Creating an expanded, more permanent team room in there with plumbing and showers and so on would be probably a hundred thousand dollars plus. And then I want to reiterate that during the renew process, one of the renew projects that didn't make it into the final cut was a significant expansion of the Civic Center to include four more locker rooms, four more team rooms, and a fitness center to the tune of one point five million dollars. The expansion of the office upstairs, preliminary estimates are in the thirty-five thousand dollar range. And the lean rail on the top row of the south arena bleachers, possibly five thousand dollars.
And that is a wild guess by me. I have, at the time, putting the issue sheet together, I was unable to make contact to verify a number. But I would think a person should be able to get it for under five thousand dollars.
Yes.
And that's one of the problems with the numbers that we have here. Some we have are, are pretty good and some are, you know, guesses without having the ability to bring in an architect or an engineer to actually, you know, fine tune the number. So what we tried to do is put the options together so you at least have an idea of what we're talking about. And then one you may want to look at, then we'll fine tune that.
I would like to encourage focusing on the, the team room situation as far as putting heating and ventilation in the storage room. That to me, as Director of the Department, is kind of a top need for the present situation. And it's a multipurpose improvement and would also be compatible with any potential future changes to that storage room space.
Couple of questions I have. So when we signed the contract with the Steel a year plus, probably a year and a half ago, they had the understanding that they were going to have more significant use of those locker rooms or that they weren't going to get displaced as much as they are now. What's different between now and a couple of months ago? After we found out that we can't utilize that locker room seven and eight?
President Schmitz, Counselor Schultz, members of the council, we have embarked in some creative scheduling of ice time and team room assignments in such a manner to, you know, we work closely with the, the New Ulm Steel Hockey Franchise, with the high school, with the youth associa-, Hockey Association, and the Figure Skating Club to set up a schedule that doesn't require the Steel to vacate their locker rooms for a day or, you know, a number of days.
So last I heard that they had to remove everything from their lockers every night. Is that no longer the case?
Correct.
So what, what's the new, the new rule? I, I don't know. Sorry.
Well, our present request is to allow us to operate like we did last winter, which was use a storage room for additional team rooms from time to time. The only way we can do that is to put heating and ventilation and, you know, emergency light and, and so on into that storage room to the tune of twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars are our.
Counselor Schultz, maybe I, I think to answer your question, what I heard you ask was what's changed? And, and the answer is really nothing.
Okay.
The language that's in the lease is there because we anticipated there were going to be conflicts. We did not have a lot of experience with having somebody with a dedicated or semi-desicated locker room. So the language became very important. It's in the document for a reason. We didn't know what was going to happen. Now, there was some creative decision-making on, on some people that said, well, we have this storage room. Maybe we can use that, and then we won't have to disrupt.
Sure.
Okay. So we went a year with that pretext that we, we could utilize that space. And it was only after discussions with the Steel when we started talking about what else did they want? What else did they see would be better for their operation? Then it came out that an inappropriate space was being used for people habitation. It did not have the correct HVAC to allow people to be in there. At that point, you know, the correspondence went out to the Steel saying, although, and I'm going to paraphrase, although we didn't push you out last year, we're putting you on notice because we can't use this space this year, that you will be displaced. Now, we might have used the word maybe displaced. Maybe we could have softened it up a bit. But the, the fact remains after a, a week of, of looking at the schedules and putting, and getting more information on the schedules, Park and Rec came up with a plan to adjust the, the scheduling to minimize the impact so that in the month of December, instead of every day, it ended up being one day. Okay. So, you know, we're trying on our end to minimize that impact. The question going forward is, can we continue to manipulate the scheduling so that it's only one day? Or do, does the City Council want to basically spend, you know, in the area of twenty-five thousand dollars to take a storage room and pipe in enough HVAC so that it can be utilized? And then we revert back to basically what happened all of last year, which was minimal disruption because we have two other spaces that can be used, not for showers, just simply for changing rooms.
That's twenty-five thousand. That's the bare minimum to get that legally up to code. Is that, would that be the correct wording?
My understanding is that would be the maximum that we would anticipate to meet code for human occupancy.
Okay. So let me ask the question, what would be the bare minimum to get it up to code for use?
I may defer to our Facility Maintenance Supervisor, Ryan Wire. Ryan's the one who's been working on quotes from our local vendors.
Counselors, Mr. President.
Yeah.
So I have been diligently working at getting information. Currently have us about ninety percent completed on dual quotes. We've met with Elwood, we've met had contractors meeting with Elwood and ourselves. And yes, this is the bare minimum that we will be able to utilize it strictly as a changing room only. So what that means is occupancy to some degree, private occupancy, I guess, would be a term to use. So doors can be closed, privacy can be gained. But long-term, I guess occupancy is not allowed. And and even so, it wouldn't be attainable anyways without showering and bathrooms and that type of thing. So it is, it requires ventilation to bring in outside air and get out stagnant air. As well as heating, providing heating supply of some type of conditioned air. On top of that, there is some minor fire code alarming that will need to be installed as well as some security lighting. And that again is the bare minimum. We've exhausted this with Elwood and and read the code and really done our homework on the requirements.
Other other items that could add but may not add dramatically is just simply that that was a storage room. It was left unpainted. You know, I mean, those are certain things that you may want to consider, you know, when you turn it into now a human space as compared to just a closet. It might even be, you know, there's there's light in there, but is is there enough light in there? You know, you know, there's more light in here than there is in that closet. And so I I would just say that that the twenty-five thousand dollars plus or minus is enough, you know, to probably get the bare minimum. But probably needs to just look at it. Maybe we need an extra set of lights in there, you know, to brighten it up. Maybe it needs to be painted and reflecting of the painted walls would would brighten it up. I mean, there are some things that we we may want to do just because it's now human space and not a closet. So I just throw that out there. And that's how the twenty-five kind of came to being. I think the original idea was, you know, it's going to be in, you know, twenty thousand area. I'm just saying, I'm going to err on the side of there's going to be other things that we want to do. I know there is, there always is. So at this point in time, you know, we threw twenty-five thousand in. And that gets us basically to last year. The Steel are in their space, the space gets reused again for small children, you know, changing rooms. There are small youth changing rooms and a and whoever else wants to use it.
Can I make one more quick comment about in extending City Manager Gromit's comment? There are other users other than the Steel that do desire to use that space. I know that there are city organizations that have shown a very strong desire to have it used there. Some of the youth organizations, it's handy, it's right off the rink. It's quick in, quick out for kids trying to while around on skates and stuff like that. So it isn't just a Steel request, it is actually other city users that are requesting this to go into this manner.
So potentially if that that was fixed up, these other groups could use that area. And then and then I would assume the Steel would be less often displaced.
Exactly correct.
What kind of timeframe to complete a project like this? If we would okay it tonight, would it be done by the end of the year? So we're not displacing the Steel anymore or is it done in the end of January?
Great question. I'm an err on the side of conservativeness and say, yes, we are hoping for the first of the year to get us back to. Because both the Steel and obviously the school teams take a fairly sizable break here between Christmas and New Year's. So we actually have an opportunity to kind of gain some ground while they aren't being used as heavily.
Is this a lot of work your staff would do or would you just be contracted out?
Our staff would do little and none. It's most of it is specialty trades.
Mike, I have a question. How does this differ? You say it differs from the other locker rooms. How will this differ from the locker rooms? Because do all the locker rooms have showers?
No.
They don't.
Four locker rooms have, actually four locker rooms share two showers, correct? And four locker rooms have no showers.
In in the south arena, the four team rooms in the south arena, each of the two sets of team rooms share a restroom shower facility. So there are only restroom showers on the south arena. The four team rooms on the north arena would be identical basically to this renovated storage room. They're just a changing room.
Okay, so it's basically like some locker rooms we already have.
Yes, yes, these the the storage room modified into two team rooms would be identical to the north four team rooms.
What would what would you be doing with the wall? That's going to separate them to make two? How are you constructing that or is that going to be removable so you can still store the boards or how are you doing that?
Yes, and conferring with Elwood again, there is a minor fire code that we are going to have to deal with. And we have things in place and a plan in place. It would be semi-permanent in the fact that we would remove it as soon as basically the high school seasons are over and the usage goes down. We would have the ability to very easily remove the wall to create the storage space again like we would need in the summer.
And obviously this room was a storage room with a lot of stuff going in it. What what's your thoughts about now where is that going to go? That stuff, what what goes in there?
Currently, the boards and glass goes in there and that's currently being used out on the floor. So it is basically empty. I mean, and and we have adjusted our storage needs to basically create other areas and it is basically empty right now.
Well, I see we have a fee of four thousand dollars that they pay for, is that for for the whole facility? Or is that just the locker room?
It's a team room locker room annual fee that's in the lease agreement.
Is that a set in the stone fee? I mean, is that a year to year fee?
It's an annual, an annual locker room rental fee. That's one of the articles in the lease agreement between the city and the Steel.
So we renegotiate that every year?
It's a three-year term on this initial lease. So this is the second season. We're already in discussions about, you know, a potential second lease after their third year is completed.
And I would assume that there's some funds in in your categories that could take care of this cost?
I'm looking at the finance director. The Park and Recreation Department fund balance has been working diligently over the past year, year and a half to repair and replace facilities throughout our system. And so our fund balance is not as large as it was a year, two years ago.
So I'm hearing yes.
Their fund balance is currently at about ten percent. So it's not at the thirty-five to fifty percent we would like to see.
Is that what percent?
Ten. So is there anything in this current budget that they that can be shifted? That's a question for Tom.
That's one thing I want to second on. I I'm fine with it. Scratch twenty-five thousand somewhere else. That fund balance as we met this morning is starting to go down. We'd fund balance, fund balance, fund balance.
Yeah, there's probably nothing within the civic center budget that you could scratch to do this project. Would that be accurate? It would have to come from another area of your Park and Rec budget.
I have not studied that specific question at this point. But I think with the number of divisions that we have in our department. There's a great probability that we could postpone another expenditure to complete this project over the next few weeks.
Well, I, you know, every end of January, we're rolling over the funds from the previous year that were unspent. And I know in your department, there's usually some funds there. So I I have full faith in you, Mr. Schmitz.
There won't be for twenty seventeen.
There won't be?
There have been some overspent projects that.
Wow.
And I want to remind you about the four decade deferred restroom project at Johnson Park and Johnson Field. That we were fortunately be able, we were fortunately able to complete over the past couple of years with your authorization. And, you know, that was a very significant half a million dollar project.
Okay.
That was greatly funded by our fund balance.
I think if if the city council desired, they they could authorize a project and then let staff work with the Park and Rec budget and see where the funds, if the funds aren't there, which they, we'll see. But if the if the funds aren't there, they can come back and the city council can utilize any of its own funding for this if they so desired.
I know we have Mr. Black here from the Steel. I don't know if he has any comments or anything he wants to state or not. My question I would have is, you know, if we're going to invest this these funds, you know, you're on a three-year contract now. We're halfway done. Is New Ulm Steel willing to look at, you know, renegotiating that contract, looking at a longer contract? What's your thoughts on on that?
Yeah, thank you, Council President Schmitz and council members. Counselor Schultz, yeah, I would absolutely. New Ulm is a place absolutely that we want to be. My wife and my family have uprooted from the cities and moved down to New Ulm and are residents of New Ulm now. And so I think initially when we started talking about lease terms, I think the initial conversation, I think the conversation actually started three, three and a half years ago. I think we talked about longer term lease than just three years. But because of the unfamiliarity of junior hockey in the area, I think we decided that maybe a three-year period initially was going to give everyone opportunity to, I guess, see if it was in everyone's best interest. I think over the past year, year and a half, the relationship has has gone well. I think the Steel are hopefully are and are continuing to be good members within the community. And and for our organization, we would look at extending the lease, whether it's three, five or five plus years beyond the initial three that we have currently. And and when we talk about and kind of just talking about the locker room issue, I know it it does state that it is kind of non-exclusive. But with the league, we did file a document that said that we would have a private dressing room. And the non-exclusivity last year, the city did never came to us asking for us to vacate our locker room. We did that on our own with the high school and different members that needed that. Because we knew that there was such a significant need for locker rooms within within the civic center. And that was kind of the same understanding that we were going to go into this year. About a month and a half ago, the city did give us a document that was going to say that, I think it was throughout the eleven or twelve high school games that we're going to have to vacate. A few weeks after that, then it came out, we will have to vacate now with hard work from Ryan, Tom, Bob and Cheryl. I believe Brian that it's, there's only one time that became a real conflict. But at the same time, there is six or seven times that our locker room is being used. We just happen to not be present at the facility. We may be on the road when it is being used. But long story short, we do want to be here for an extended period of time.
Would you as, so if we were to change locker room seven, eight, that that scenario you'd like to move into? Or do you want to stay where you're at and let the other teams expand into that other area? Do you have a, just bringing it up, I don't.
Yeah, I guess in our conversations, I think the the current situation that we're in is is less than ideal. Being that there's two locker rooms with a bathroom split in the middle. The locker setup is is less than ideal for, I guess, for our situation, being that we have twenty-five to twenty-seven guys at a time. I think the lockers were constructed for more of a locker space of fifteen to eighteen players at one given time. So if if an expansion or a remodel of seven and eight or of the potential storage area that's deemed as nine and ten, if we were able to utilize those spaces and have one larger square footage area, that would be our preference.
It comes at a substantially larger price tag.
Very large, yep.
Because you would need the shower.
Yeah, the the shower is basically the key, the key component. And and for us, a space like the storage area with just the HVAC added to it, that is something that I I believe the league would not deem acceptable. And so the, I guess, the showers, the bathroom in those facilities are essential for for the locker room.
Any other questions, Mark?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and offer a motion then to authorize up to twenty-five thousand dollars to move this project forward.
I'm going to second that.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion?
One of the things that, you know, we haven't really talked about is this team has came to town and they're drawing, having a good draw of people that come to their their games, they're they're out in our public and getting involved in community events. And and it's just another great thing to add to our dynamics of our city. And and they got little kids running up wanting to get autographs from their players. And it's just kind of a a cool new thing that we have in our community. So I'm glad they're here and I hope they do stay.
Any more discussion? See none, on paper, say aye.
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 Pose, nope, motion carries.
Mr. President, the other two items that are listed on the agenda, which was the office room and the handrail. These are again, you know, costs or may not be now part of the of the motion tonight. But I did want to make sure that that these were two other things that that the Steel was saying we'd like to have. How do you want to go forward on those? Do you want more specific information and and design with with more accurate estimates before that comes back? Or does like the handrail, the leaning rail, is that something you just want staff to 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 deal with? I mean, that does take out the top row of seats of wherever you put that handrail. Because who's going to want to sit beneath the the beer coming down your your head? So.
Myself, I'd rather see, I want to see the concrete cost. I want to see, here's the number, this is what it's going to cost. No overrun, no fund balance has to be used, we're short. And again, I want to go on the comment, I'm glad these are great ideas. I'm a hockey fan my whole life. All this is at the city cost. None of our other youth organizations are requesting anything, that's as is. I mean, I understand they have their contract. I just don't want to see, find the money in this year's budget or cut something in next year's. Not another added hundred thousand dollars for next year's budget. I'll I'll vote no for that if we do that.
I I would like to see some more specific dollar amounts as well. I I I don't think that's the stand that they're talking about for having that upper level is really a New Ulm Steel request. I think that's something that all events would benefit from. I, you know, from what I've seen in in stadiums or where these are built, they don't replace the upper level seats. It's basically just at that standing level at the very top. So I'd be surprised if they have to displace any seats, but that's some of the stuff we could look into.
Right, well, we've analyzed it and and, you know, we've had the building inspector there. And so when you when you place a leaning rail and still have to have handicap accessibility, you've got minimal requirements you have to meet. You know, I'm not saying remove all of it, because even if you did fifty percent, that frees up a lot of space for people to stand up there, you know, without leaning against the windows.
They put their food on or their refreshments on or it's six inches. I mean, it's not much, but.
Well, I think the the proposal is how do you tie those things down? You probably could put little tables up there and and things of that nature. But that wasn't the concept that was put before us. It was attach it to the concrete. When you attach things to the concrete, you have to take into account that that's where the heating coils are to heat the concrete. So the so the viewers don't sit on cold concrete. And so we looked at, well, then why not use the existing bolts that are found in the concrete right now, holding the seats down? Then you can free up the space for handicap accessibility so people can get walking behind it. But you also create a problem if you don't remove the seat. That's six inches above somebody's head is that leaning rail. Where you're going to be putting your 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 beer or your pop or your water. And so do you want to put people underneath that? I don't believe so. So we've done enough analysis, I think, to come to the conclusion that it likely would take out the top row, not the whole row. But, you know, if you want to free up fifty percent of the space for that, you probably would end up okay. And you wouldn't have to drill in. And you wouldn't have to drill any new holes in the concrete because you're using existing bolts that are there. So, this isn't a, a whim. We've, we've done some analysis on it. I just don't know if five thousand dollars, you know, it's a small amount. So, I'm not too concerned about the dollar figure. Uh, some wood and some steel and some, some effort on the staff part, I think we can attach it. Uh, the bigger project is the, is the office. You've got sprinklers that you have to abide by code, you know, uh, on. You've got the lighting. You've got all the other things that go along with the confining a space, whether it's HVAC or whatever. Uh, we've had some preliminary discussions on that. Uh, Ryan has done an extremely good job. Again, this is, this is an estimate, but I don't believe it's, if you have an, if you have to start moving sprinkler heads and, and, and getting into the specialty trades, you're just not building a, a soft-sided wall, you know, but air going over the top of it. It is going to be, uh, a, a solid uh, office space. With that in mind, uh, we, we do need more numbers for that. Uh, because I, I don't know that, uh, the material I've seen and going out and visiting with Ryan, Tom and Elwood, you know, raised a lot of, you know, if you can move the wall twelve inches this way, you may not be able to mess with the sprinklers. And if you can move, you know, y- there's some adjustments that might be able to be made. So, that's just another one of those things. Uh, you know, when we signed the lease, we all knew what office space was going to be there or what was available. Uh, they would like to have a, a second office. It's gonna come at a cost.
Well, let's get those costs. And I think we can then have a better discussion on what, where do we go from here?
All right. I'm sure Ryan's ninety-five percent there.
Yeah, if he's almost there already.
Right now.
So, if you authorize us to pursue study of project two and three, we will do so.
I'll offer that motion.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? On paper, say aye.
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 Pose, nope. Motion carries. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven G, consider reversing the Park and Recreation Commission recommendation not to portion of the grass in the Lower Riverside Park located adjacent to the Minnesota River. I'm gonna take that one. The reason it's on here is because I asked it to be put on the council agenda. And if you go down and look at the overview, I really don't care what it says in the overview because for one thing, I wasn't elected to the city council to please one or two people. I was elected to the city council to do what's the best interest of this city. And in my opinion, being a city of charm and beauty and let Riverside Park go to weeds is not what I consider a good decision. And I'll be honest, that's why it's on here. And take it from there. I'll probably put my money's worth on this, cause I've been involved in it. Um, first time it came up, I believe Director Schmitz was at the meeting. Was it the twenty-twenty meeting, Tom? Or was it our park and rec meeting?
Well, it's a part of the chamber visioning twenty-twenty subcommittee, but also it, it went through the park and rec commission twice, uh, with what to do with Lower Riverside Park from a groundskeeping standpoint.
There, there was lots of discussion at the twenty-twenty meeting, pros and cons. One for environmental, one put it back how it was, cutting the grass. Uh, then it, I believe it went to the park and rec. They voted to leave it as is. Don't cut it in the flood stage and whatnot. It then met some opposition. It came back to the park and rec. And then in the second time, it was kinda after talking with a few people, first time I had received one phone call, I actually voted no. I said, cut it at the park and rec meeting. That's enough controversial issue. And that's why it's here today. What does council wanna do? I guess I'm gonna add one thing to it. I was at one of the meetings that took place with, uh, twenty-twenty vision with the Parks Department with Dave. And at that meeting, Ron Bowlen was there. And he does a lot of educational and things like that down at the Riverside Park in the old schoolhouse down there. And one of the requests he had is if he could keep a portion of the unmowed grass, just for educational purposes for the kids. And it, something like that can be worked out. I'm not against that. Anything for education is fine with me, but to leave the whole thing, no.
Uh, Mr. President, um, I've also had visitors in my office. And one was pretty adamant about it should be done. It should be moved. It should be mowed. And something should be done with it instead of leaving it go. So.
You had a phone call. I had a personal visit.
One other comment I do wanna make, that there were parties at the second park and rec meeting, you know, I had brought up, okay, the small compromise as President Schmitz said. Okay, the worst part that floods first always the southern part of the park. Choose to use that as just a little environmental area, whether it's fifty feet by fifty feet, hundred by a hundred. I'd be fine with that, but the rest, cut it. That's my take.
You can offer a motion since it's your board.
I don't think there's any more discussion. Uh, I do wanna bring up the two things with the cutting. I mean, we did have it come to our attention about burning it. Uh, there was one other item that was brought in. Was it actually hiring the private contractor? This time to get it done because it is so high. Well, I think what we need to do now is we want it to burn it. Right. But I think yesterday took care of that portion of it. But. With, with that being said, I'm just gonna make the motion authorize a following groundskeeping in Lower Riverside. Mow the area once a year. Uh, I'm not gonna, wait a minute, excuse me.
Yeah.
It's mow it.
There is no option. There's no option to keep it. Yeah.
Well, I'm not gonna say mow a performance driver. No. Maintain the lower portion of Riverside Park. That's it.
As you do other parks.
Yep. As you do other parks.
Except for the nature area that you said at the lowest point.
That was the idea brought to the park and rec. I mean, they had voted, no, don't do anything. I mean, if you want me to put that in the motion. I think your group can work on that one and solve that without a problem.
You can, yeah. We got faith in you.
Well, if the motion is to mow it all, then we mow it all. If the motion is to mow.
Accept.
It all, except for a portion, then that's what we'll do.
Resign that motion. I'll make a motion to maintain the lower part of Riverside Park. And coming to an agreement, maybe I'll just set the standard, leaving a hundred foot by hundred foot area on the southerly part as your nature area. End of discussion.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
If we need to alter it, just bring it back.
I should have voted, yeah.
Dennis Born, Seven Eleven South Front. I live on the Minnesota River. And if you leave anything go down there, within probably five years, you're going to have a willow grove. And, and I don't think a state or a, a city park should be put in that condition. So, putting a natural area, you want to pick where you put that. And you wanna make sure to maintain it so it doesn't become a willow.
Right. I'm sure Ron will take care of that for us.
I wouldn't say, I'm sure anybody would do anything. But if you want a nature study, you've got Mini-Con Park, which is beautiful for that. And nothing's being done with it.
Good point.
It's a park, mow it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we got a motion and a second, but we could bring it back if they wanna.
We can always.
Park and Rec wants to alter it. They can bring it back to us.
Any more discussion? Seeing none? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, nope. Motion carries. Item eight A, consider acceptance of list of claims paid and approval list of claims to be paid. Claims paid in the amount of one million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and eleven cents. And claims to be paid in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents.
I'll move it.
Second.
You got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none? On paper, say aye.
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 Pose, nope. Motion carries. No more business. Meeting is adjourned.